Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, October 27, 2025. I've got 7:10, so we will go ahead and call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order. Appreciate everyone's patience as we wrapped up our executive session. We will get started first with items from the Department of Administrative Services. Am I looking at you, Director?
Bailey and I are happy to answer any questions that anyone has for Argahana. There was no...
Thank you very much, Director. There's been some discussion over the last several weeks on this item, so just we're circling back for any lingering questions. Any discussion from my colleagues? Ms. Bowers?
Yeah, thank you. Director Volmer, I very much appreciated the email that you sent on October 22 regarding the process and engagement for the economic development strategy. Would you mind sharing that with the public and with council this evening in terms of the process for the economic development strategy?
Sure. The economic development strategy was developed by economic development experts, the steering committee, and the public engagement in tandem with the strategic plan process. Planning Next engaged with Niagara Partners and Julie Colley to provide expertise on the economic development strategy. Kevin Hively of Niagara Partners has been working in the Columbus region and did an assessment of the current economic landscape in Gahana. That assessment is found in Argahana under the Economic Development Strategy section. Ms. Colley attended CIC meetings to discuss the plan and worked with Director Godkey and I on the strategy. The steering committee and public engagement were a vital part in the development of the economic development strategy. Planning Next conducted business roundtables during the first round of engagement in addition to the table talks. In the second round of engagement, we had a specific economic development question and associated board of economic development facts for the public to comment on. The economic development goals and strategies had their own table at the Joint Steering Committee with directors in June. Finally, the strategies had two dedicated boards in the third round of engagement and were on the online survey for all participants to review, including council. The economic development strategy had engagement at the annual Economic Development Day event that featured Josiah Brown. Following that event, Josiah hosted roundtables made above community partners from the CVB, schools, and the Chamber. In addition, local developers and partners participated. The economic development strategy was intentionally integrated throughout the entire strategic planning process.
Thank you very much, Director.
Any other discussion on this item? Ms. Podova?
I do. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the page here. Thank you so much for all of your work on this. I know that there have been, there's been a lot going into this for the last year. And also, thank you to everybody in the administration because we've, myself and a lot of my colleagues have gone to the engagement sessions. I know that they were late nights, early mornings, getting community input, so I appreciate everything that you guys have put into this. Especially like that it is happening now because we are getting the, we are getting fresh data and we're not operating off of something, you know, a survey that happened four or five years ago as we're, you know, later in this evening, we're going to be talking about Creekside and redevelopment, and this gives us fresh data to work with and people's perspectives on that. But ultimately, it can help us with, you know, how we, how we vote on that. But there was one part that, in the appendix A that we received, on page 11, so I'm gonna, I think this would probably be a question for Planning Next to answer, but, so it was the majority of homes are, is this the right one? Yeah. Are single-family detached, and it's 9% of large multifamily homes. And some apart, it says some apartment complexes have been built but more needed to diversify the housing stock. And I was just hoping that you might be able to expand on that a little bit, on kind of why we need a more diverse housing stock and also why, why that's needed specifically for Gahana, if you can.
Sure. So I actually think that that data point goes hand in hand with your vacancy rate statistic that's on another slide. And I do want to remind you all that this data was pulled as of the United States Census 2023 because we were pulling it in fall of 2024. So there may, as of now, fall of 2025, be some updated data. But as of 2023, your vacancy rate was low, below the healthy recommended vacancy rate of 4%. So we looked at all of your housing stock, which included the single-family, multifamily, you know, duplexes, townhome type things, and determined that you do have a very low vacancy rate, which while some people think that's a good thing, it just means that there's not very much available housing stock in Gahana. We also looked at some of the age groups that decreased in the 10 years between 2010 and 2020 and kind of determined that there wasn't very much housing stock for, you know, age and place or younger professionals who might want some of that more flexible housing type like apartments and multifamily. So it is recommended that you kind of increase the housing stock just so that you have more diverse housing stock. It's always recommended to have more diversity in your housing stock so that you can reach a variety of different types of people, different lifestyles, different ages, you know, the whole spectrum.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that will, that pairs well with some of the discussions we're having later this evening. I also had a question about the renter-occupied housing units. It was on page 14 of that appendix that, what was it? Oh, the 29% of all housing, is it of all housing or specifically of single-family that 29% is renter-occupied?
That's all housing types.
Okay. All right. I'm guessing that that number would likely go up as this is a, a little bit of an older census data. And then one last question, that 2% number, would our short-term rentals, would they be included in that 2% as non-occupied or are they considered occupied?
Yeah, so that really depends on how the owner classifies that short-term rental. It's really hard to say. If they classify it as their main, you know, residence, then it's not counted in that. But if they classify that as like an additional residence to their main one in the census, then it is counted in that.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. I also wanted to give a quick shout out to Kelsey, who is, I don't see her here this evening, but I was just kind of scrolling through the very large appendix of all the, oh, there, of all of the feedback and just happened to see one of, one comment in there was that Kelsey did an excellent job explaining, you know, why, where we are and how we got here. So I just wanted to highlight that for you. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Podova. Another discussion on this item. Seeing none, I would just add my gratitude to everybody involved, all the committee members, the volunteers, everyone who took the time to participate in one of the many outreach opportunities, surveys. Thank you very much, and thank you for being here again. Resolution, it is slated for a vote on the 3rd. I would ask for regular agenda. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have items from council office. We have a resolution concerning services to a property proposed for annexation, and I believe for this item, I'll be turning to the city attorney.
Thank you. So for this particular item, we kind of began the process back when there was a pre-annexation agreement that was filed. And so this is step two where the petition has officially been filed with the Board of Commissioners and the, I'm sorry, is one of my phone?
Let's try that. Is that better? Okay. So previously, we filed a, we considered and approved a pre-annexation agreement. This is step two of the process where the petition has been formally filed with the county, and we are to, within 20 days after the petition is filed, adopt a services resolution that outlines what services will be available to the proposed annexed property. We also, during this time period, have the right to object to the petition on particular grounds, which is whether or not it was statutorily in compliance with code. And I will submit to council that it, by my review of the petition and the appropriate statutory code section, which is 709.023E, it does meet all the criteria. So the petition is sufficient, so there's no need for us to object. A lack of action on that step is deemed to be consent, so there's nothing further we need to do on that side. But we do have to consider and adopt the services resolution, which is before you today.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I think just as a matter of process, if I may, before I turn to you, Mr. Renner, after the resolution for services, what would be the next steps?
The Board of Commissioners would consider the annexation petition, and then we have to wait at least 60 days after we get confirmation from the county. And within, after 60 but before 120 days, we would then have to act to officially approve the annexation.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. Mr. Renner, I'm sorry, I appreciate your patience.
No, very good question. Thank you, Chair. So the question that I have really is, I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this. It's regarding Section 3 of the resolution. And I had to go back and, because I was remembering zoning, there was something particular about the pre-annexation agreement. And in the pre-annexation agreement, they protected their right to be able to still hold the township zoning, but then we had some language about coming into the side, into the city. And a few of us had, it really verbalized concerns about that property, especially about the back side where there's water, there's a lake, there's a creek, and we want to make sure that, you know, the open space and all that kind of stuff is protected. And I want to just make sure that Section 3 doesn't change any of that. Is that correct?
It's my understanding that the territory once annexed would be zoned within the city. And so I am trying to pull the pre-annexation agreement now to try and reference that. We do have Monica Fuster here on behalf of the, as the agent of the annexation. Do you have anything on this point? I know you had, and you're welcome to approach the microphone.
You can use the table or the lectern if you'd prefer. Thank you, and welcome to committee. So switch on the back of the microphone.
It should be like right up on the top of the, there you go. Hello? Is it on? Yes. Yep, the red light's on. He's just asking. Closer. Got it. My understanding of Section 3 is that has to do with part of the code 709.023C. It talks about if there's an area of the territory that will still be bordering the township, you need to have a buffer zone. So that's what's being addressed specifically in Section 3. In regards to your concerns about zoning, that will be a whole separate process that you will approve of what zoning is issued to this territory. I know from my discussions with David Fisher, who is the other attorney on this case, that he, he's aware of all those concerns and will be willing to work with you as needed.
Thank you. That's adequate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Any other discussion or question on this item? Madam Mayor, did you have any comment on this or? Okay.
No, I don't. I mean, I think our city attorney explained the process. Ms. Fuster, thank you for being here this evening. As they both have shared, this is one step of many to go through the process, so council will next have the decision as to whether or not to actually annex this property, and that will, that lies in your hands. So this is a petition through the council office. The administration simply answers any questions that the petitioner has, so we really don't have a role in this. But look forward to, if council has any questions, feel free to reach out to us at any time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Fuster, for being here. Just to emphasize, this is one step in the process, and this particular step is simply saying what services the city is able to provide or, and township is mentioned in here too, for what services are available to the properties. So look forward to more discussion on the annexation itself in the future, but that is not today. So thank you very much, Ms. Fuster. Seeing no further discussion on this item as it is a resolution, I'm fine with consent on the 3rd. Is there a preference from anyone else?
It's fine.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have items from the Department of Economic Development. This item is coming back to committee after lengthy discussion in other meetings and is currently scheduled for a vote on November 17th. Good evening, Director. Good evening, Mr. Lamb and Mr. Benson as well. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Appreciate the speed with which this, this meeting has Appreciate the speed with which this, this meeting has hence thus far proceeded. We'll try to keep that up during this section. You're going to be supportive team. Stressing me. All right, good evening, Councilmembers, Mayor, everyone joining this evening. It's my pleasure to appear here to continue the approval process, Connect Real Estate, Benson Capital Development Agreement. By providing answers to the questions you've been asking the past few weeks, I asked you to give me your bright line issues. Other were, in other words, issues that would help you to make your decision. You submitted five and I will address those tonight. I sent you all a memo last evening and we'll review that tonight. I want to recognize, as you already have, Frank Benson and Bob Lamb from Benson Capital and Connect Real Estate respectively, and they are here to answer any questions that you may have. So, the five bright line issues that you submitted to me were the development agreement review process and whatever continuing liabilities there may be to the city, better understanding the usage of the city-owned parking lot on High Street and working towards a solution to offset the loss of parking, the extent of public engagement, the results of the public engagement and communication and the public's response, fiscal impact analysis that demonstrates the net impact of the proposed project on city finances, and finally, traffic impact study process. So, we will start with, quick reminder, if you haven't been paying attention the last two months, talking about a mixed-use project, two phases on Mill Street and High Street. You can see the details there. Item number one, we heard from you, the council needed time to review the documents thoroughly and made sure that that happened. You should all have the most recent, not most recent, the final version of the development agreement and the memo that city attorney sent outlining the most recent changes. There are basically four. One, we verified all of the parcels, that the numbers are accurate and correct, that originally the purchase agreement had two separate purchase agreements, those were merged into one with staggered closings to cut down on confusion and redundancy. The reconveyance period was clarified as parcel by parcel and it's extinguished with the receipt of building permits. And then there was clarity on the staging areas that the construction team could use throughout the process, where they are and how much of them they would be permitted to occupy because they would be shared spaces with the city and, and on CIC and city property. Councilman Schnitzer submitted some questions to the city attorney and I, and we answered those, we collaborated and answered those, and he suggested those be provided to you all, which were included in the memo, but just to review them quickly last night. Basically, these questions all revolve around conveying liability. And I understand that to mean liabilities that the city might have now that it will continue to have after the development agreement is signed. So, there were six there revolving around unexpected infrastructure costs, so there are none at this time. If new public infrastructure needs arise, which could happen during the planning review period, such as large water lines need to be added to accommodate capacity, these are often driven by the city as they submit their plans, they're reviewed by engineers, capacity studies, all those sort of things. There could be those requests made by the development to the, by the developer to the city, but the city is not obligated to provide anything. And I'll look at the developer team if they want to clarify anything along the way. So, number two, is there any existing liability for environmental or infrastructure issues upon breaking ground? If issues like environmental concerns or infrastructure relocation arises, the developer bears those costs. Hopefully, all will be learned during the inspection period and there will not be any unknowns that might cause future costs to be borne by the developer. Keep in mind that the developer may terminate the agreement if they find unknown issues or unknown causes that would be too much to bear. They could always terminate the agreement, but the city has no obligation to remedy or fund these issues for the developer. Question about if any of these remediation, relocation costs were identified, are there caps on those costs for the city? The answer is, there are no caps, but just like the previous answer, the developer investigates during the inspection period and will decide whether to proceed with the project or not. Question about lingering CIC liability exposure, there are no lingering liabilities. The properties are sold as is and the developer assumes all the risk and cost thereafter. Question about explicit city costs. So in other words, like are there known costs that the city must bear from now after the development agreement is signed? The only committed cost at this point that we know the value of are the parcels that are being conveyed under the development agreement. So there's no money changing hands, but there's value to those parcels that is being conveyed. The city has no obligation to provide any further existing financial resources. However, it would be unfair at this point not to acknowledge that the city is making certain commitments regarding a reduction in inspection fees, a commitment of TIF and NCA revenue sharing. So those are unknown amounts at this point. We've got, we've got some understanding of what they might be, but it's not like those funds are currently existing with the city that may then have to convey after the development agreement is signed. Those will be generated afterwards and shared afterwards. And then finally, are there any revenue guarantees from the TIF or the NCA or other sources? No, the city is not guaranteeing any revenue sources from TIF or NCA or et cetera. If revenues underperform, the city is not responsible for covering any shortfall. So, in essence, this will prevent a quote bailout of the project using city funds, which may have been the impetus for that question. So I'll stop there, look at the city attorney and ask if she has any, anything to clarify on those issues. And then look at Councilman Schnitzer and ask if I captured the intent of your questions accurately and answered them to your satisfaction.
For the record, the city attorney did shake her head no. Little microphone issue over there, so, Mr. Schnitzer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director. You've also provided the memo to all members of city council, which includes the long-form version of those answers and yes, the, at the highest level, what I'm trying to capture is, is what's the city's all-in cost on the project? And it seems to be largely one-time and largely fixed in nature and that with no revenue guarantees, no contingent liabilities or anything like that, my questions are, the answers to those questions are satisfactory. So thank you very much for that. Thank you to the city attorney as well.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Item two, clarification on parking usage in the city-owned parking lot on High Street. So at the prior committee of the whole meeting, I presented preliminary findings from the district-wide parking study. This is a repeat of that slide. You can see the summary there. This includes all of the surface lots from Granville to Carpenter and Shell to Mill. Does not include anything south of Granville Street or the garage. These are surface lots in that area I described. 28% average daily usage across the study period, and if we isolate the High Street lot in particular, you can see its usage there, broke down, broken down by morning, noon, and late afternoon. So I promised you some heat maps. Here, here are a few. So here is overall average parking demand across the district and you can see the scale there. The closer to yellow, the closer to the circle being all yellow, the closer to full it is. So it says, it says sparse and dense as the measurement, but it should be considered empty or full. So an entirely teal circle would be empty, an entirely yellow circle would be full. And you can see there what the average overall parking demand is during the parking study. So we see that the areas with the greatest demand are on Town Street on both public and private spaces. The next highest demand is along the west side of Mill Street and on High Street south of Ogden Alley. So that sort of L-shaped, if you drive down from, you go south from Mill Street and then east over on, on Town Street, that presents the biggest demand. So looking, breaking this down further by morning, afternoon, and evening, we see in the morning, a similar pattern, the biggest, the biggest demand is on Town and High Streets in the public parking areas. And just for fun, I put a trivia question on there. The most used parking lot during that time is the street parking next to Signatures with a 69% occupancy rate. And at noon time, the averages show the same pattern with slightly more demand on Town Street and in the far north on High Street, near some of those more office-type businesses. And again, the most used parking lot by occupancy is the street parking next to Signatures, 87% at lunchtime. Switching to late afternoon, we see the highest level demand on Town Street and increased demand along the High Street corridor. And no longer is the lot next to Signatures the highest demand lot. That honor goes to the lot across the street from the lot next to Signatures with a 77% occupancy rate in the afternoon. Looking at the city parking lot in question, it shows about average demand, demand that is about at the midpoint of the scale. You can see the circle there is red with some teal around the outside, so we could put that, that demand kind of just below half, I would say, which, which bears out with the numbers as well. So, note, this study only looks at average usage on regular days. On few occasions, the need for that lot during special events has been mentioned. However, these are outside of traditional parking studies because they are just that, special events. The event renders the nature of this study moot because of the unique requirements of use, the number of attendees, access to the lot, et cetera. So, special events that would, would require an increased demand or make that lot unavailable should be considered just like that, as special kind of one-off events and aren't usually considered and shouldn't be considered in these type of parking studies. So at this stage, it's too early to propose final solutions, but we made strong progress toward understanding broader patterns across the district and how the lot functions within it. The next steps will be to continue reviewing the data, crafting solutions based on smart, evidence-based decisions. So moving on to public engagement, this is a list of all of the public engagement activities that we have undertaken so far. It is a review. I won't review it again with you, except to say CreeksideReimagine.com is active at this point. Do not try to check it on any city devices because the firewall is blocking it currently. We're working on that. And certainly don't do it while I'm speaking because that wouldn't be polite. So skipping to the, the feedback that we received. I would consider it all to be largely positive. The public has asked good questions and voiced their support and concern in constructive way. Some feedback you asked for specifically was from the public sessions, so here is a quick summary of that. Across the four events, around 200 people provided feedback either through live polling, small group discussion, comment cards, in-person or through stations. The results showed a rating of 4.1 out of 5, 5 being positive or the most positive for the mixed-use development and 4.6 out of 5 for the plaza revitalization. During live polling, the five most popular sentiments were exciting, stunning or impressive, visually appealing, fresh or modern, unsure or apprehensive. Another live poll question revealed the following sentiments. When asked what aspects of the proposed mixed-use development stand out to you, would this have a positive impact overall? The public reported that it draws people in, bringing attention and investment and helping Gehanna quote, "catch up with other areas in the region." Mixed use, participants said the project brings a mix of uses that the community wants, but they had questions. Participants felt optimistic overall but inquired about its impact on public services such as roads and schools, as well as affordability. So overall, the public feedback, which I provided you two memos in my memo from last night, has recognized that Creekside currently lacks attractions, a defined identity and foot traffic. The public likes the mix of uses and the urban feel of the project, but the most shared concerns were over the number of units and the impacts to city services, water capacity, traffic, parking, et cetera. The public also praised the outreach process and expressed their gratitude to being informed and included, of which you were all a part. We continue to monitor the feedback daily through the creekside@ghenna.gov email and other channels and remain committed to open, ongoing communication. So switching to the fiscal impact analysis, these are tools for understanding what impacts a project will have on the city financially. In the past, you've evaluated ROI on specific abatements and overall regional economic of the, economic impact of direct and indirect induced effects. This, I prepared a detailed analysis comparing projected revenues to city costs. So what's coming in from the project, what's going out because of the project? It's important to note that it's different from other measurements you've used before because it focuses specifically on the city's budget and not overall economic activity or return on investment of a particular project. Note, it includes many assumptions. Something like this is a projection, a guess into the future. Data is not always immediately available, particularly for our city limits. Data is often based on census tracts, county level, zip codes, et cetera. So some math and some assumptions have to be made. I tried to list that in my list of assumptions and clarifying kind of what each cell label meant on the spreadsheet that I sent you. So to create the analysis, I used two models, both of which basically approach it the same way, by determining the revenue and costs by use type. So in this case, it was multifamily use and commercial use, which captures restaurants and hotels. So the first method captures the marginal cost of growth by unit type. So in other words, to add X number of So in other words, to add X number of multifamily units, what would be the increased, increased marginal cost to the city? So this looks at how much each new apartment, townhouse, apartment and townhouse will generate and consume in the city services in a year. It also includes data from, um, the Gehanna-Jefferson Public School Annual Report, 2025 City Budget, uh, and discussions with local safety personnel. The second method approaches it the same way by, by use type, in this case, restaurant, residential, and hotel, uh, but it goes about it a little bit differently, uh, because it takes American Farmland Trust's cost of community services. Uh, it's sort of a meta-study of all of their studies, um, and come up, comes up with an average cost of community services for each type. So any number above a dollar means that it consumes more in services than it generates to the city. Any number below a dollar means it produces more for the city than it consumes. So then I just took the marginal cost of each unit, multiplied that by the, um, by the cost to come up with what the marginal, uh, the total marginal cost would be. I'm sure I thoroughly confused you with all of this explanation. But both approaches tell a consistent story. The project is expected to be fiscally positive, meaning it brings in more revenue than it consumes in services, certainly in the long term. The first method shows basically a break even during the first 15 years, and then it turns positive after the property tax abatement period ends. As with all projections, this assumes, now, with any projection, this assumes full operation and doesn't include construction impacts or induced spending. So I didn't build into, so this assumes that like on day one, year one, it's fully built and occupied. We know that's not going to be the case, but there's really no way to estimate what that lease-up rate would be, what the construction pacing would be. So that should be considered on the front end, that there'll be a bit of a lag before it starts to generate, um, any revenue, uh, to the city. It does, it also doesn't include any construction impacts, uh, such as income tax collection from construction workers, uh, you know, they gotta take their lunch back, lunch break and all go to Signatures, although apparently there's no place to park next to it. So it doesn't include that or any what we call induced effect, which would mean all those new residents in that development have a certain amount of disposable income that then they go spend in the local economy, which has a multiplier effect. I included that in the green box that says, uh, not included impacts, but I listed them there. They're not added in, but I listed them there just for reference. Okay. And then finally, regarding this, um, not all development projects are intended to have the same effects. This is important to remember in economic development practice. Some are purely for job creation, others are meant to strengthen competitiveness, bring new industries, some remediate environmental issues, some support existing businesses, some bolster infrastructure. This project is a catalyst project. Of course, it will have a positive fiscal impact on the community, but it is also intended to stimulate the district by bringing more foot traffic and supporting local businesses. That impact is not reflected in this, um, analysis either. So I'm not advocating that a city should lose money on a project, of course, but saying that this project will likely have additional downstream impacts that aren't necessarily captured here. And then finally, very briefly on traffic, some questions about traffic impact studies and traffic impact analysis. So consulted with our engineering department, um, and this is generally how the process goes. We have requirements for what data is required in a traffic impact analysis. It's based on the size and type of a project. The developers will compile that data to our specifications, submit it to us. It's reviewed by city staff and approved before any construction permits are issued. This often takes several rounds of back and forth, um, clarification, which ensures that all traffic concerns from circulation to safety to mitigation, pedestrian strategies, are identified before the project moves forward. So traffic isn't being overlooked. It's built into the development review process, but something that will happen, um, down the road, no pun intended, of this, uh, development agreement. So I think I'll stop there because I have sabotaged my own desire to make this quick and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director, for not only the presentation, but all the follow-up and for fielding questions throughout the week and for bringing it all together this evening. At this point, I will turn to my colleagues. Any discussion or questions? Mrs. McGregor?
It's great to say that we have, um, six, you know, 667 parking spaces, but how many of those are not in private lots or next to a business where they say, have a sign that says violators will be towed? Um, you know, that's a, a lot of times, like at the flea market, we had some people parking in a private lot, and the owner came and blocked it off, and he says, "No, you can't park here." And so there was an issue there because then people couldn't leave. So I, I don't know that, that all these businesses are just gonna be real happy to have people parking in their lots when they're not going to their businesses, even if it's after hours.
That's a little washed out. It's hard to see.
Because the liability, they have the liability of, um, you know, having people park in their parking lot and then have accidents or things happen to the, when it's in their lot.
Yes, ma'am. It's, uh, across the whole district, this includes the parking lot, it's about 50/50. I believe there's a few more on the private side than the public side, um, but it is, it is close to half.
So it's street par, a lot of it's, some of it is street parking?
Parking, yes, is, is street parking.
Did you count, account for, uh, parking places that are, um, like in the neighborhood, you know, where there's more housing in the residential section between, um, Mill and Scholl? Did you count those street parking?
No, ma'am. These are, unless it's marked, these are only counting marked public parking areas. So if the street is striped, then we counted it. If it's not, we didn't.
Is that all, Mrs. McGregor?
Uh, right now, yeah.
Right now. Any other discussion or questions?
Well, I guess I do have one more. You know, the, the businesses that are relying on this, this public parking, that is, and I know it's not a big lot, but there's like several businesses that people say, you know, "That's the lot I always park in. That's where I go when I'm going to this restaurant," or overflow from Signatures because they're crowded, or even more across the, across Mill Street. And, um, I was looking through the capital improvement, um, plan, and up at Academy, they're gonna take, we're gonna take a large section of gra, of field and make it into parking. And I guess I'd make an analogy, it's like, why not, why do we have to do that? Why don't we just tell people they can park in the neighborhood? And, you know, just park in the neighborhood and walk to Academy Park. It's not any farther than they're gonna have to walk down here. And so I'm thinking, it doesn't seem, you know, like here, for the athletic fields, we're gonna provide extra parking, but for downtown, we're not. We're not gonna say, you know, we're gonna push people in the neighborhood here and to park in on public places that are far away, but at Academy, we're gonna ruin half of the field to provide parking. And why wouldn't we just tell them to park in the neighborhoods and around other places? Because the citizens would have a fit.
Sure.
And they would have a fit. In the same way, I think that trying to, this is gonna be too far away for most people in those closed businesses to wanna park other places. And that's my thing, whole thing, is I think that we're setting up some businesses to fail, um, because there will not be closed parking. And I don't see that that should be, you know, they, they built their businesses there because, uh, they had that parking available, and it's been that way for 25 years. And now we're gonna say, "No, you don't have parking." And I don't think that's fair. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. McGregor. Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Padova?
I'm just curious. I know that in this study, you guys didn't include the garage. I know I've heard just in like conversation before, um, that the garage is usually only full during events. Do you have any idea of like the percentage that it is full, like, average?
I believe the hand count, our drone is not an X-ray drone, so we couldn't get the garage with the drone shot. So I believe the hand count did account for the garage, but that wouldn't be reliable enough because it was only once a day. So that, that would require a, a larger, a, a second effort to, to fully capture the garage usage.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We were really just focused on, on this parking lot.
Yeah.
For, for this, this study.
Yeah, I, I do, I appreciate that because, um, I mean, the garage, there's almost, it's almost never full. And so I, I understand there are a lot of people that like to park in that lot, um, totally understand that. But if you're meeting somebody at Signatures for dinner, um, you're probably not gonna say, "I don't like parking in the garage," and go home, you're probably just gonna park in the garage, even though it's not your preferred spot. So I think that, I, I, I think that we'll be okay on parking. Thank you for the work that you've put in.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Ms. Bowers?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Director Gocke and City Attorney Tamela Larson, and of course, Mr. Liam and Mr. Benson, for all the work that you've put into this. I very much appreciate the, the comprehensive overview, the deep dive into the fiscal impact, um, and then a, a very thorough review of the development agreement. So thank you so much. Just, just to clarify, the, um, the use of city property during development, that's 12.4.9, I believe, in the development agreement. Could you help summarize, perhaps either Director Gocke or City Attorney Tamela Larson, summarize the terms that are in there? I see three specific provisions. I, uh, the public parking garage, uh, being number three seems pretty self-explanatory, but maybe as, uh, an, an understanding of which lot or which parcel would, would be allowed to be gravel-surfaced and then utilized for parking?
Go ahead.
Sure. Uh, so the particular surface lot is actually the CIC-controlled lot that would be, um, east of, but it's still green.
Is it?
Yeah, she's okay. Okay. I'll lean in.
You're fine. I heard you fine.
Um, so for the particular surface lot that we're talking about is a CIC-controlled lot that is east of the Phase 1 properties. They've also asked for the right to use the Phase 2 lots up to a certain percentage. I believe it's 70, no, that was for the... So to answer your question, is the Phase 2 lot in, in full, the, the entire property? Uh, it is the CIC-controlled lot. It is the parking lot, uh, sorry, parking garage as permitted by regular public use. And so the only change from the first version to this version is that they did limit the percentage of use on the CIC-controlled parcel and specified the correct parcel number there.
Bob Lamb?
Yes.
I believe it was on the city-controlled parcel that we were providing a percentage of spots that would be occupied. I, I'm going off memory here, so please don't hold me to it, but I think it was, uh, 75% during the day, or possibly 50% during the day. I would have to pull the agreement to verify. And then it was our intention to fully use that CIC lot.
So I think it's, that would need to be flipped then, because as written, the percentage allocation is, is specifically referring to the CIC-controlled parcel.
So we need to talk with her about that.
Yeah. So we just have to move that, the percentage use, so that would be 75% between the hours of 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and 33% after 4:00 PM. So those percentage restrictions can be moved to the city-controlled lot rather, with the Phase 2 parcels, rather than the CIC-controlled lot.
Yes, that's acceptable. Uh, we had tried to follow the numbers that were provided at several meetings ago, so I apologize for the confusion there.
No worries.
Okay. If we could also just clarify too, um, because the, and this may just be unintentional, but the way it looks right now is that all of the Phase 2 property could be utilized for parking, um, during the construction process, which would indicate that there would be demolition of all Phase 2 property sooner rather than later. So I just, I just wanna make sure that there's a lot of clarity around use of Phase, Phase 2 property.
So for clarity on Phase 2 is, Phase 2 has both CIC-controlled properties as well as city-controlled properties. So the CIC-controlled properties, we would be looking to utilize for parking. Uh, some of those spots currently have parking on them to a certain extent. And then on the city-owned lot would be the one that would be happy to accept those limitations that I just spoke about.
Yeah. More explicitly, uh, the property at the north end of North High Street, um, has some historical significance, and I think that there's ongoing exploration of what, how to navigate that. Uh, so I think it was just looking for clarity around the timing and, and conveyance that, um, that, the use of, even though there's no property conveyance, but the use of that parcel in particular.
Uh, we, we previously stated that we're happy to work with the, uh, CIC and the city on how that northern property is handled. From a timing perspective or specifics right now, i- it's really hard to be able to speak to that in any kind of determinative way. Uh, I, I think one of the, uh, key items, uh, I was going to address at some point tonight, but maybe now is a good time, is one of the things that's a little unique about this agreement than some others that you may have seen, is the fact that there are multiple parties involved in this, where agreements on how land costs were going to be handled had to be worked out through multiple entities. That's one of the reasons why you see that 180-day period at the front for us to conduct due diligence, uh, going to the questions that were raised on infrastructure costs and who would carry those. Um, because in a standard purchase agreement, where it was the developer or the buyer entering into it with the seller, we would do a type of clause, and then we would go through that process to determine the feasibility of the project, whether engineering, environmental, financial, all of those steps would be undertaken. Here, because multiple entities had to be involved, because land costs had to be determined, um, through several different entities, some of those items have not been fully gone through because we need to have the land in contract to know that there's a development agreement in place where it'll transfer to us for us to go through those various stages. Um, and so that is one of the reasons why I can't give you a hard answer on when demo would start on that, uh, at this time, because some of that work just is not being completed and won't be completed until we have a development agreement that we know we can rely upon to go expend those funds to determine those items, whether it's infrastructure-related, uh, environmental-related, fiscally-related, all of those things.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Lammon. I, I appreciate the further context on that. I don't, I don't think it so much as looking for hard and fast dates as so much as identifying the soonest when that process would begin. I think that would be useful for the community's purposes, but we don't need, we, I do not need to put you on the spot tonight. It's just...
No, I, I think it's very fair. And, uh, in fact, uh, Jeff and I spoke about it earlier, from a timing standpoint, uh, for construction to begin, we have to really, or I guess a better way to put it would be for us to receive building permits to know that we are able to go forward with the project that we're proposing. You know, a lot of that control is outside of our hands. It's with the city, it's with the state, uh, approval processes, but it's most likely at least a year and a half or so out from the day the development agreement is approved. So again, I can't give you that hard date for your specific question, but it isn't going to be a situation where we are showing up with building permits in hand tomorrow and starting the project. There are multiple steps, multiple approvals that have to play out.
And we'll just make sure that this 12.4.9 matches everything that we have and understand, a shared understanding of tonight. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Mrs. McGregor?
Was there any, um, report on the discussions with Mifflin Township? Or the, um, TIF?
We met with them and, and... We met with them and discussed the project, and they are going to return with some follow-up discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Can I also add? I mean, really, until a development agreement is passed, there is no TIF. So we need to, we have to follow the process for this. Development agreement is currently pending before council. Then we would negotiate the terms of a TIF, should the, presuming the development agreement is passed and a TIF is agreed to be established, and that is when we would then have those more detailed conversations.
I still want to forget about...
I can report.
We had a great meeting with them last week.
I don't want to put words in their mouth, but they said they'd send a letter if we asked, but they were very supportive of the project.
Thank you for that clarification and for the follow-up. Any other discussion on this item this evening? I would just note my thanks for the modifications to Section 5.2 and Section 12.46 regarding the reconveyance period and developer commitments for arts and community engagement. So I think that helps in terms of clarity. I appreciate that. I know there's been a lot of back and forth, and I appreciate everyone's due diligence on this. I will just note that on, there will be a public hearing on the 3rd on this item. Is there a desire for this to come back to committee just as a placeholder in case there's any other last lingering questions, comments, concerns on this on the 10th? I see Mrs. McGregor nodding.
Well, I just think, might as well, if there's nothing comes up, you just don't discuss it.
That works.
I was just going to add, there's some finer points put on clarifying some of the percentages and stuff like that. I don't know if we need to just have like, if it comes back to committee, if there could just be some verbalization and those have been taken care of.
That one change of moving that, everything within the parentheses regarding the percentages up to the correct lot, and then perhaps some more specificity on which Phase 2 parcels would be the staging lot, those changes can be made this week, probably within the next couple days. And then I can circulate that last, as a red line, because that should be small enough that it's easily readable, so.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing nothing further on this item, then, we will anticipate regular agenda on the 17th with coming back to committee on the 10th and a public hearing on the 3rd. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have items from the city attorney.
Yes, this is just a red line version of the supplemental agreement for CIC with the repayment provision. In the event that they draw on the appropriated funds, that they would repay any reimbursement received by the state or the COIC, CO-CIC.
And Director, does she have anything you wanted to add on this side?
I would suggest, and I'll send these to you, because I didn't quite get a chance to today, that we just add a clause. It's back on.
It is.
That we would add a clause in Section 2 that says, that protects the city, where we would just add, after the dollar amount, we would just add "for demolition," so that it clarifies the usage. And then in Section 3, add a clause to the beginning that just says, "If funds are used for demolition, the CIC agrees." So again, it's just clarifier, gives each organization a little protection. So I'll send that to the city attorney, but since I was looking at that this afternoon, I thought I'd mention it now.
I think the only reason I didn't add that additional detail is because it is, demolition is specified as an eligible expense in the primary CIC-city agreement, and so I use the language eligible expense rather than demolition, but I can certainly add that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? If not, it is slated for a vote on the 3rd. Regular agenda, fine for that then?
I'm fine with consent.
Consent, fine for that as or, okay. All right. Anything else for committee of the whole before we adjourn for finance? Yes, yes. Seeing none, we will adjourn committee of the whole, and I will turn things over to Chairman Renner for finance.
Good evening, everybody. Ready? All right, I want to go ahead and call to order our finance committee. We have one item. It is discussion of Ordinance 43-2025, the CAP, the Capital Improvement Plan for '26 to 2030. Mr. Schultz, floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So I actually don't have anything formal tonight. I know that the CAP itself was presented on September 22nd. You guys, you folks have had the document for that period of time there. I know that we did request questions at some particular point as it related to the document, and then also as it related to the 2026 capital budget request, which obviously, we presented more information on that last Thursday at the Budget Workshop. I'd be happy to, you know, in deference to everybody's time, Mr. Gocke, go in a little bit quick. I'll try to go even quicker than him and basically just turn it over to you folks for any questions that you might have on either item, the plan itself and/or, and/or the budget. I guess the one note that I would make is, is that I haven't recirculated a new document only because I'm waiting to make one set of changes instead of continually making changes and sending it back. It is a 185-page document that's made up of about 16, 17 different files, and it takes about six hours to put it together. So I'd rather do that one time and not two or three, so.
Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Mrs. McGregor.
One thing that I noticed is throughout the parks thing is they call them shade structures that they're putting up. And I guess one request I would have is that you plant some trees along the same, in the same place as the shade structures. Shade structures will wear out and have a specific lifetime where, as if we plant some shade trees in the general area and allow them to grow, over time, we won't need the shade structures. And that would be, you know, in all those cases, plus it would add to the beauty of the area.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any other questions or comments? Oh, we do have one.
I do have one, and I'm sorry, I don't have it written down, so I'm trying to... So the, I'm looking at the email that you had sent us about the aquatics facilities that you'll be adding that project into the assessment phase, and that it will be a priority 3, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so I just wanted to get a little bit of clarity, because my understanding was that that is on somewhat of a timeline, that our pool at GSP, not Hunter's Ridge, but at GSP, that pool is about to reach its usable lifespan, and that sooner rather than later, there are going to have to be major investments if we want to, want to keep that exact pool. So I was just curious why it's a priority 3 as it could do rather than a priority 2 should do, because that one is, reduces future operation and maintenance costs and also rehabilitates or replaces an obsolete public facility.
Correct, because the conversation around GSP is to really execute on the Aquatics Master Plan, which hasn't been fully vetted, hasn't been fully discussed. We don't feel that the reconstruction of the pool, the front pool at GSP is an option, right? So there was a question that we did receive in regards to having it re-lined. We don't believe that relining the pool another time is an option, and therefore, that would constitute a much larger project, one that we need to have many more conversations around. That is the $30 million that was identified in the Aquatics Master Plan, 10 of which, roughly again rounding, was for HRP, and then 20 of which was for GSP. So we need to have a much larger conversation around that. Part of the $90,000 in assessment for 2026 is to, is in part to figure out whether or not what has even been proposed as part of the Aquatics Master Plan is even capable of being built on the GSP site from a geotechnical standpoint, from a floodplain standpoint, and a variety of other issues and topics. So while you might not see it in black and white on your plan, it is something that, where the conversation does continue and that we'll end up marching forward with a proposal to you folks, but it's not something that we're ready to dive in and put into the plan at this particular point in time. One of the things that the Aquatics Master Plan did talk about was how much water the city needs and can support. And right now, with all three pools, HRP, and then the two pools at GSP, the splash pad, so on and so forth, I don't remember the exact percentage of how overwatered we were, but we were, we did have more water than other communities of our size. So that's all part of the conversation that needs to go on. Obviously, you know, $20 million project is, just for GSP is, is a very large, large item and one that needs to be thoughtfully considered, and then ultimately either find it way into the plan or not find its way into the plan. I'll point, I'll point to the first few chapters on how a project gets put into the plan, and we're not really there yet in order to put the entire thing into the plan at this particular point, but we'll make efforts towards that end over the next few months and then into '26.
Thank you. And then just for kind of some, so I feel like I kind of, I know a lot about this because of being on the Aquatics Steering Committee, but I also feel like none of that information has really been like distributed or brought to council, like, so I'm not sure, my colleagues might just be like, "What is she talking about?" But so just for, I guess, clarity, is there, will you guys be giving us like the results of that, just so that then we're all working off of the same information?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, I think part of what's going on right, I mean, obviously, the calendar's been very busy between Creekside, two projects, CIPs and budgets, and the timing just hasn't really necessarily been there, 8/25. I haven't been here to give an 8/25 update in three months now. So there's a lot going on, and honestly, the, there are certain things from a human resources standpoint that need to sit on the back burner, and I'm sorry, but the Aquatics Master Plan is one of them.
Okay. I drove by 8/25 today, and it's looking good.
Thank you.
So thank you for your work with that. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't, you know, a lot of people volunteered their time to be on that, and I just want to make sure that that sees, sees the light of day and is given the time that it deserves at some point, so.
It's never far from our mind.
I will probably keep asking.
I promise.
Thank you.
Stephanie, right behind me, won't allow it to be very far from my mind.
Just to piggyback on that, that was actually a question that I had. I know this transitions us into the capital budget request, but with the, with the $90,000 site assessment identified, I think it would be helpful context to understand the Aquatic Master Plan, even if it's sharing the plan to us ahead of time with or without a presentation.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mrs. McGregor.
There's the Royal Gardens path, and it's been, it was like removed, and that it's used, it's in the plan for like $8,500. It's not a big project. Is there any reason we can't get that done for the activities that are, that the neighborhood has in there? I mean, the mayor said we're going to have something for Christmas, but I mean, as a long-term, it's a minor project. I know it's out of the way, but surely it can be included in something else asphalt-wise.
Sure. We've made multiple improvements to Royal Garden, from the roof at the gazebo, the surface of the gazebo will be redone later this year before the event you were speaking about. The sidewalks will be brought up to ADA compliance. And then a portion of the path that you're referring to, the ghost of the gazebo, is planned on being reinstalled. There is plans also to put in a temporary pathway to what is more the convenience parking behind AutoZone there, I believe it is. We've been looking at it from a park-and-ride standpoint, which obviously is what the primary use of the path is there, and there's actually an extension of the sidewalk. I think that there, there could be some concerns liability-wise, dropping pedestrians off into a private parking lot, so it is something that we are looking at and discussing and trying to get a better understanding on, trying to get a better understanding on. So a portion of that is going to be replaced this year. Again, temporarily, a path will be created for the winter event there, and then we'll do our normal support of that particular event with hanging, hanging lights on the pine tree there on the corner, and a variety of other things that Parks and Recreation Department supports, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, I had sent a couple questions to you via email as requested. I appreciate you getting back with me on those. First, regarding PK-29-03, which was the possible Clark State to Theori to North Hamilton Trail, do we have, I know the county engineer's office was having some back and forth with city staff. Is there any potential timeline of when additional information might become available?
I don't believe that we've had a conversation with the county engineer's office at this time in regards to the feasibility study. I think, well, we haven't had a conversation with the county, the county engineer's office in regards to the study itself. I do know that there's a portion of the trail that's in Jefferson Township that is part of Linkus, that deals with the north end. I know that your, your thought is Theori to North Hamilton, so the other side. And no, we have not had that conversation at this particular point in time. But yes, it's on, it's on the list to do.
Thank you, sir. And then, I found the information you provided regarding entryway signage helpful, and I'm just wondering if you could share that for the broader audience this evening?
Sure. So there's a, there's a project identified inside of the, inside of the CAP for gateway signage updates. It's been in there for a minute. 8/25 has really given us pause to really design a cohesive set of signage that, you know, if you're, you're at one particular part of the city, you recognize that as a municipal sign, if you would, and the city, you can have a brand and so on and so forth. So one of the things that we did as part of the 8/25 project and its sign package was we expanded their scope slightly in order to also include gateways. When we talk about gateways, we're generally speaking, talking about a larger entryway into the city, Hamilton and Tech Center being one that comes to mind quickly. 62 and, 62 right there at, at the highway there is another one. But one of the things that we've been doing is looking at those different locations, but then all the secondary locations, more like, like Agler, Agler as you enter the city, where there might just be a small medallion-type sign that says that you're entering the city. We're pretty close to landing on some formal designs. Creekside has been another project that is, has given us a little bit of pause to basically say, "Okay, let's make sure that we get this brand correct." It would not just do entries, entries and gateways, but it would also be wayfinding signs, so how do I get to a Creekside? How do I get to the municipal complex? I'm sorry, the civic center? So on and so forth. So that's the intent of what's, what's in there. So it's anywhere from the small medallion sign to the large gateway sign that you would see at, again, Tech Center and Hamilton. Obviously, that would be a multi-year project with multi-year construction requirements potentially. You know, some of the easier ones, the small medallion ones are easy. So here in the next, I would say 12 months, we'll start to see that design take shape throughout the city, and obviously, we'll share that with you guys as, as that design becomes finalized.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Snitzer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director, a question, I'm hoping you can help me kind of reconcile a couple of different documents, and then maybe that will point us toward how this is going to evolve in the future. In our, on the agenda, there's a document, it's, I believe it is DOS-RPT, nope, that is not it, apologies. The one that is 2026 Capital Budget Request Preliminary. This is the two-pager with the table. And then obviously, we have our... two pager with the table, and then obviously, we have our CIP book. I'm specifically referring to the project that is titled FA twenty-fourteen oh-one, this is Creekside Flood Mitigation and Plaza Improvements. On the table, there's an asterisk and no value associated with it. In the book, there is about twenty-three point two-five million associated with calendar year twenty-twenty-six.
On this table here?
Yes.
Looks like it, the best of your knowledge, as good as your eyes can see. So the Twenty Twenty-Six request, right? So we're requesting nineteen point four-eight-seven million dollars for the Twenty Twenty-Six request. Okay, this is what I presented at the budget workshop last week. So the one that you're seeing attached to the, this particular item on the agenda is slightly outdated. The one from the budget workshop last week is more up to date.
Sure.
The number is nineteen point five million dollars.
Total.
Total, today. We are not asking right now, today, for any allocations for Creekside because we're not a hundred percent sure what that number, what that number is and what that funding package looks like. We will be back in the first quarter, early spring of twenty-twenty-six with what that funding package will look like
Okay.
In order to do the public project, the twenty-five million dollar project that you see outlined in the document. I'll draw a correlation between the aquatics piece and this particular piece. We're a whole lot further along on design as it relates to preliminary design for Creekside. We got good construction estimates, so on and so forth. We have a conceptual aquatics plan that hasn't been fully vetted, and we need to understand that a little bit better before that gets rolled into the plan. So here in the next few months, you're going to see us sitting back up at this counter here, looking for a budget request for the Creekside project. We'll have much more conversations as to what exactly that project will be. Is it just a flood mitigation? Is it the full package of what I presented here a couple of months ago? What does that look like, right? Because there's a private component there. You guys passed a resolution last week, maybe we get some state dollars, and we know what that looks like in the next few months, so on and so forth. So that's continuing to evolve, and that ask will come. Some of the mistakes, if you would, or the questions that were asked when we were here back in September, we had already plugged in what a debt service looks like on our side, right? Because we need to anticipate what that looks like year over year, and that was some of the results that got into one of the tables on the backside of the published document from September twenty-second. So that corrected, and now shows zero because technically, today, our ask is no dollars.
Okay. That's certainly helpful, and it helps me understand kind of where things are going. So the ask that is in front of us is this nineteen million and change.
Yes, sir.
But we should all anticipate at minimum a conversation about a, an additional very large ask, probably not lost on the members of council up here as well as those of you in the administration. This is that big nine list. We've already talked about a couple of those up here already today. Okay, that just helps me to understand kind of where we're going with this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Six, just a note on the big nine, right? So six of the big nine are fully funded in the CIP plan itself over time. I guess five, right? We'll take Creekside out of that because of what I just explained, but those are accounted for. One of Mr. Weaver's questions in his document that he didn't ask me for tonight was, you know, making sure that we are planning ahead for the Big Walnut Trail, right? But absolutely right. So one of the things that I will point out is that, Joanne, I believe she's sitting behind me now, she doesn't allow the CIP or the capital resources year over year over year to outpace what it is, or the project to outpace what the resources are, right? So the minute in which that, a particular fund goes into the negative, it's up to me, engineering, parks and rec, public service, in order to get those out and reallocate, not reallocate necessarily, but shake, I've been using that word, shake and level out what those resources look like so that over the five-year increment, no fund goes into the negative balance. Otherwise, it wouldn't pass, it wouldn't pass the straight face test for Joanne and April back there, and we get sent back to, you know, we get sent back to go at that particular point in time. So all that's taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Ms. Bowers.
Thank you, Chair. To follow up on this question, as we are moving through this budget process and identifying an anticipated total request for twenty-twenty-six, would you be able to provide us a sort of max cash contribution that we would expect to see potentially for the plaza renovation project? I see Joanne shaking her head no.
That's a tough, that's a tough number to hit at the moment with not understanding exactly what the
I mean, that's going to be our funding conversation that we have, is we haven't even vetted out what it is we're actually going to ask for, let alone what our funding mechanism is going to be. It could be partial cash, it could not be, knowing that we have a very large book full of projects that we need to do, and how do we balance that? Do we, how do we want to allocate our resources? So those are going to be the conversations that we're having leading into that first quarter of twenty-twenty-six.
I think I'm just trying to wrap, maybe this is just such a basic question that it's, I mean, you're already thinking ten steps ahead of maybe where I am, but we have this project of roughly twenty-three million dollars. That's certainly not going to be a request for a supplemental appropriation. I mean, it couldn't be, we know that. It sounds, though, like it would be a very small portion of that, if any cash contribution at all.
Don't know yet, until we actually sit down and figure out. Again, we have grant funding that is pending.
Yeah.
So, and what are we actually bringing forward? Again, are we, are we just doing flood mitigation, or are we doing the full project? And I think that would be based on those conversations we have about what are the funding possibilities in front of us, and of course, the will of council when those questions come about.
There's a TIF resource question, there's a private funding question, right? So what's listed in the document is twenty-three million, but I also know that there's conversation about, you know, what the private ask needs to be, right? So now, all of a sudden, our number starts going down from there. So we know that we have a total construction estimate of about twenty-three million. Like you're saying, we haven't done any VE on that, value engineering, right? We're trying to manage that budget. We think we have a good budget. I think to Joanne's point, thank you for not allowing me to answer that question, I think it would be difficult for us to exactly say right now exactly what that funding looks like, so.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for an exact. I think I was asking for like a maximum, just to help us as we look at the bigger picture. And I know you all are too, but that's also part of our role, so.
That would be referring you back to our fund balance policy?
Yeah.
So you could look at what our unreserved fund balance is, how low, you all are willing to let us take that down, and that would give you your answer.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And if I could, Chair, just by way of follow-up, I think that there's, this teases out sort of an interesting nuance that I had asked Director Schultz via email with breaking the project down. I navigated away from that email, but essentially, right now, the entirety of the Creekside reimagined project is identified as a priority one project, and I think that there's some recognition that there are different tiers involved in this project. And so one of, I recognize that there is a need for us to look at it in totality, but I do express openly kind of my question about whether, or at least acknowledgement, that there are multiple priority tiers to the Creekside Plaza project.
No, and that's fair. I think that, you know, the document is, the document's only as good as the day in which I print it, right? So there are times where, I mean, the information goes out of date, right? I mean, we are always working under the assumption that we're going to spend every dollar that gets allocated, when we know that that's not actually the case, right? So things change. It's very difficult for me to tailor, you know, one project inside of the document and have multiple parts and pieces. I know that we've had two or three CIP advisory committee meetings. I've presented before you folks in totality what each one of those phases on each one of those, for each one of the phases that make up the total Creekside project, and I think my slides had, you know, phase one was X number of dollars, phase two was X number of dollars, so on and so forth, to get to the requisite twenty, twenty-three million, twenty-three and change. You know, I do know that, you know, we've sat before this body and the CIP advisory committee and have said, and it will be no shock, that we are going to bring the entire project to you because we believe that that's the merits of the project. The difficulty of this particular project is, you know, six years from now, you're not going to do the lower bowl area if you haven't done it, if you haven't done it at this particular point in time. And that's kind of how we're planning around it. We've looked at this project upside down and backwards and said, you know, can we phase it, can we phase into it? But the easiest thing to do and phase into is the upper plaza, you know, so if you were to phase that over the course of three or four years, what have you done but upset everybody in the area because you've now basically put them in a permanent construction cycle? And I know that that's not what you're asking for, but I would contend that the information has been provided in the fashion in which you're asking, that you're asking in the presentation that I think I gave probably in early September as it related to the project overall, so. And when we, and like my answer in the email said, when we present it in the future, it will be presented as those five phases so that you folks have an understanding of how, what the makeup is there and how it, and how it gets parted and pieced together, if you would, so.
Well, that might have been an answer, I don't know that I saw that in your email to me, but thank you. I think that the conversation here tonight is alignment on maintaining the integrity of that recognition, so I think we've all aligned on that, so thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. I want to just remind my colleagues of the budget calendar. In your emails, Director, Senior Director Volmer has sent to us the public safety budget request Thursday. Send me your questions, and I'll send them over to Jeremy and the administration, and with the expectation that Monday, November third, we will have the presentation of the Department of Public Safety. Also, on Friday, we get the big budget book, so we're looking forward to that. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you.